Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I said, "Good morning," and then you put, let me try this again. This meeting will start, thank you, everyone, for coming today for our work session of a call that we need to order. Public comments? We got public comments?
Yes, ma'am, we have three individuals.
We've got three individuals who have signed up this morning. And the first person we have is Mr. John Tomasky. Mr. Tomasky has come forward and he asked if your comments are limited to your discretion or geared toward elected officials or anyone else on this meeting. So I'm not sure what your, oh, you have Rhodes, isn't he? Is that what you want to talk about?
Good morning, everyone. John Tomasky, we're going to talk about Rhodes. First, I wish to thank the four district commissioners and the chairman for the kind letter addressed to my son. He's unable to be here today. He's occupied all the official business today and tomorrow. So I am thanking you on his behalf. On the subject of Rhodes, I was at the first session of the adjustments to overpasses that was held at Mason Creek School. And I have three reactions to that. First is that there should be appropriate legislation, federal, state, or county as appropriate, that allows the operation of vehicles on the public highways, length, width, height, weight, that sort of thing. Secondly, law enforcement at state or county level should be cognizant of these regulations and enforce them. Third, while I was at the Mason Creek event, and there was no formal presentation, in answer to a question by another resident, the G-DOT employee said that the genesis of all of this was that a tall rig had been unable to pass under an overpass in South Georgia, doing considerable damage to the overpass. So that they were now proposing to jack up several overpasses in West Georgia. I then asked whether the cost of that was going to be borne by the trucking industry or the general public. Of course, it's going to be on the backs of the general public. At that point, I left the meeting, and as always, leaving, I saw the deadline coming in, possibly, you got that same information, possibly, not depending where you are for your life. In any event, it is not the responsibility of the general public to pass legislation or to enforce it. So the parties responsible for those things need to do their job. Rather than go through all of this expansive construction, which is going to greatly delay and inconvenience people, the G-DOT person estimated it would be like forty, forty-five days per overpass. Whether doing concurrently or not, I don't know. But that's quite a lot of time. And this is not the sort of priority as I-85 collapsing in Buckhead. This is a few overpasses out in West Georgia. So this is going to be an enormous inconvenience, and I think it's unnecessary. First of all, if your rig is too tall to go under, you don't belong on the road. Secondly, you can get off, go up the ramp, across the road, down the next ramp, back onto the highway. And finally, for safety reasons, rather than reconstruct the overpass, you can build a barrier through which traffic must pass, and you have it at the same height as that overpass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tomasky. Let's meet up, Don Ray Leonard. Thank you so much. Your subject matter was one of these buses. Can you state your name and your address, please?
Good morning. My name is Don Ray Leonard, Creekside Manor subdivision in District Two. In Douglas County, we are diverse in our ages, races, genders, neighborhoods, and economics. But in all aspects of this bus project, there is a prevailing theme that cuts across all lines in this county. That theme is simply, no buses. Clearly, the arguments against the proposed bus system are many. Let me recap a few of them. There was no feasibility study conducted. If you have done it, we would love to see it. There was a 2016 Needs/Wants-based study that you have paraded as a feasibility study with fourteen hundred participants. That equals approximately one percent of the county. City of Douglasville was not consulted, much less involved in the planning, but will be responsible for costs to support this bus system. In addition, the city of Douglasville did not give their approval for the buses, and even though Douglas County Board of Commissioners said they did in the CMAC application, was this fraudulent information submitted on a federal application to secure a grant. Show the public where the city signed off on that. The BOC did not vote for the four-route system. You can dance around this one all you like. It was unlawful, non-transparent, and the Transportation Committee and the Transportation Department are responsible for this ruse, and the board allowed it to happen. There was no cost analysis conducted. No one in this room can tell us how much this bus system is going to cost. Even Gary Watson said, "We did not know until after we received the CMAC grant." I expect to know the cost before I make a decision to buy in. What will the financial impact of this bus system be on the taxpayers? Thechange.org petition for no buses as of today has generated four thousand five hundred and twelve signatures. Douglas County Sentinel survey has, excuse me, five hundred and five participants to date, eighty-nine point four percent voting no. Survey of people attending Commissioner Mitchell's coffee and conversation this weekend, over ninety peoples, over ninety percent of the room opposed, the BOC accepting the CMAC grant. You have a duty and obligation to the citizens of this county to uphold the rule of law when conducting county business. Policy and procedure have not been followed. You know it, and we know it. We've asked you to retract the CMAC application. You refuse. Again, we implore you to vote no on the CMAC grant. We can only pray that this board does the right thing in the end. Chairwoman Jones, this baby does indeed belong to you now. You inherited this project from the previous administration, and you have done your research, but your research is flawed. This project is dead on arrival for the citizens of this county. Listen to the people. They are saying no to this bus proposal and no to this CMAC grant. That's it. That's it. That's over.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Ms. Leonard, we'll take your concern under advisement. But I ask not least, Mr. Pierce? Mr. Pierce, if you can state your name.
What? But not least. Oh, I like the words. Larry Pierce, forty-one twenty Van Sant Road, Douglasville, Georgia. I was up at four o'clock this morning, taking my notes. I've got them out here. Now, they basically pertain to is Mr. Bussy on the fourteenth. Now, Mr. Bussy is supposed to be the spokesperson for the coroner, right? He was hired. Now, the first thing I want to clear up, was during my lawsuit, I did a lot of investigation, and it was dismissed, and that's fine and dandy. But the truth of the matter is, when he said, "Cooler, cooler, many more," whatever you want to call it, where bodies go, it's going to save the county money. Let me tell you something. That's about like saying, "I want to have some more children," so it's going to save me some money. No problem. First statement he made is, he said, "There's a charge from the other funeral homes." No, 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 no. None. I've talked at length with Mr. Andrews over at High Tower. There has never been a charge. It's all been complimentary, okay? Never been a charge. All of them have coolers, except Billy Watkins. They don't have a cooler. Now, the other thing he spoke about is that we've got a cooler, okay? We've got one. And he invited some of you to come down. So I went over there, and I looked at it, and he said, "I can't see inside of it because there's a body in it." I said, "Okay, I just want to see outside." So I had someone with me to make sure that I wasn't going to get assassinated by anybody. So I had a man with me about the size of a share of pounds. After that little viewing, I had to pick up some papers, and I went over to talk to the chief, the park chief. Unplanned, he came up to talk to me. I said, "Chief, you heard Mr. Bussy say we got a cooler?"
Yeah.
I said, "You know where it is?"
No.
I said, "Where do you think it is?" He says, "I don't know. He never said where it was at." Well, it's underneath the old courthouse, behind those two metal doors, okay? That's where it's at. It's actually, it's actually directly under the rape room. When you pull the coke machine out, and you take a drink of coke, it's right under there. All right. All kind of problems with the cooler, but I'm not getting into that, okay? That's for another day. But I'm going to tell you something. And Madam Chair, I ask that you let me go into this to some degree, because you're never going to hear it again. And that is, this poet wrote something that pertains to everyone who's ever done things. That is, "Oh, what a tangled web we weave when we practice to deceive." Now, you know, some people don't know what they're doing. Some people think they know what they're doing. And it's y'all's job to know what you're doing. Mr. Mitchell, you've been in marketing, you know how to analyze things, and others have been around a long time. We're eighteen months into the practice, which is one-third, okay? One-third. And one-third of the time, if you haven't figured out what's going on, then you just need to leave. Now, what's going on is the practice that when they bring bodies now, he's saying, "It's going to save the county money." Ha! You ought to see what I got here. I got charges to the county, to the county coroner. Cooler. Yep. They're still charging a hundred dollars, okay? Right here. Now, I want to, I want to jump over the road for just one minute. This is going to finish it up.
You have four minutes.
I went over to see.
You have one minute, one second.
I went over to see Cooler again. While I was there, Mr. Rogers said, "I don't have a key." I said, "Oh." So he called the coroner, and the coroner said, "Mr. Pierce has already seen the cooler. He doesn't need to be around there no more." Well, let me tell you what's going on.
Mr. Pierce, you have almost five minutes.
Let me, let me just finish this one sentence, please.
Mr. Pierce, you're finished.
Okay?
Thank you. You can't, Mr. Pierce, I've given you almost five minutes to do this, so you're finished. Please, just wrap it up to your last sentence. I'll allow you to wrap up your last sentence.
Can I say, "Finish it?" Yeah?
Finish your last sentence.
Mr. Axel earned in the last pay period five thousand four hundred dollars, and Mr. Rogers earned one thousand one hundred and forty. The locks were changed in the doors. Mr. Rogers can't get in, okay? So he can't do his job. Now, it's up to y'all to figure out what the heck's going on, okay? And I use the word "heck" lightly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pierce, will you take this matter under advisement?
Boy, I wish you would.
I am. I'm giving a good presentation, and myself, and self-actively address your concerns.
But I'll tell you what. It's just all right.
The next presentation is from the chairman, but she's not here yet. So what I want to do is move forward with the presentation that I have, so we can move forward. So, do we, can we put that on for, see if we can get started? She should be here, hopefully, in a second. Did you have an opportunity to speak with the chair? Okay. Could you, could you give, please, if you could, my commissioners? I'll come around. You said you wish we could take a minute back. I did. I did. Okay. While they are working, the board, I would just like to say again, good morning, Board of Commissioners and citizens of Douglas County. It is my judiciary responsibility to separate the motions from responsibility, responsibilities. And I said, "Leaders don't react, they research." After many hours of comparing bookkeeping and recording, record-keeping practices of the coroner, of the current and previous coroner, I am prepared to render my findings. Commissioner Geider, I can't agree with you more that coroners should conduct a sign-off investigation, particularly if they are at the scene, rather than paying a deputy coroner a hundred and seventy-five dollar fee. Being that coroner Renee Garland is a part-time salaried elected official, you and I know that it is impossible for her to conduct all death investigations in the county, because death occurs around a full-time clock. Without a doubt, the number of investigations or death investigations invoices per one hundred seventy-five dollars processed for deputy coroners in the finance department was higher in 2017 than 2016. Death investigations conducted by the coroner has no budget impact, and the finance department does not receive an invoice, and the number, and that's by the coroner. Now, the coroner, because, remember, all the death investigations and the invoices that we pay there for the deputy coroners. So right now, there's no way to really track and see how many death investigations are conducted by our coroners, because no invoices are submitted to our finance department. To say that there were more deaths in 2016, no, 2017 versus 2016 is not a logical answer. What I do have is an overview here, I had an opportunity for, to look at both coroners, because in order to determine who's doing the right thing, you have to look at each coroner to determine the best approach and the best method. Because if we're going to utilize our previous coroner as the standard of excellence, I wanted to make sure that I understood his practice. So if you look here, since coroner Renee Garland's budget review, and I had an opportunity, I work with finance, I serve on the finance committee, and on May fourteenth, 2018, the finance committee reported that Renee Garland's budget, and I'll just read it verbatim, reported coroner Renee Garland's budget is slightly over-targeted at one point seven-two percent. This is down from the previous month's variance of three point ten percent, and coroner Garland has sixty-one percent of her budget remaining to operate through December thirty-first, 2018. And so right now, she has sixty-one percent of that budget still remaining today to operate. And the next bonus contention, 2018, the annual budget, her budget is a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Year-to-date expenses as of five nine eighteen is sixty-eight thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. She has a year-to-date encumbrances, and then her remaining budget is a hundred and twenty thousand five hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-three cents to operate for the rest of the year. And I just want to find my PowerPoint. The next slide, if you look at the next slide, I looked at her operation. I wanted to take a look at that operation, because I owe the citizens this. And the overall appearance of the office is organized, clean, and efficient. It's automated operation with computerized hard copied documents. Records, management practices align with best practices. Files are systemized and easily accessible. Coroner deputies and the deputy coroner's credentials, they're trained and sworn in to conduct death investigations, transports local, in and out of the county. Using Twenty-First Century Automated Coroner, they are using a coroner ME software application to compute required information related to death investigations into the Georgia Vital Record System. There's a sign-in process for individuals entering the coroner's office and aspiring, and right now, I understand that this coroner's office is aspiring to be the first coroner's office in the state of Georgia to obtain, to obtain accreditation status. When I look at, I made some budget recommendations to the coroner, purchased six metal trays, since this is what they needed to do. We brought those trays in overnight. I asked my county administrator to work with me to increase capacity to hold deceased citizens prior to being transported to GBI. That's been done. This will ultimately reduce transport fees and take some pressure off the budget expenses. The proper funerals, which are, cost nine hundred and ninety-five dollars for innocent citizens, in 2016 were about thirty-two thousand dollars, and in 2017 is thirty-six thousand, which is still, the correlation is still pretty close. This is an expense that's unpredictable, and the invoices are generated to the coroner's office by funeral homes. And then, I said, "Last on this slide is death investigations. Expenses were targeted as an opportunity for process improvement. The coroner is an elected official, and I cannot dictate how she run her office. However, I believe she respects my experience with controlling budget expenses, budget expenses. I recommend that coroner Garland set targets for the number of deaths that she conducts and set up per month for those death investigations, and also for the deputy coroners. When she is on-site, she must conduct that, according to Georgia law, Code Forty-Five. She has to conduct the death investigation, but if she's not on-site and her deputy coroner's there, he or she must perform the death investigation. Mind you, your coroners, your deputy coroners are sworn in by state law, they have to be sworn in by state law, by judge, because they act in a similar role as a coroner when they're out conducting death investigations. And she'll be here in five minutes, and I'll let you talk. Let's look at this again. Now, go back to that slide. Yeah. So if you look at your coroner, the current coroner, 2017 and present, Rogers is a regular part-time, we have Axley, regular part-time, Usherly, regular part-time, and we have Bussy, which is a part-time administrator for the office. But if you look at the previous coroner, that was from 2012 to 2016, we had Axley Transport Mitchell, the person's name is Nathan Mitchell, he was a deputy coroner. Then we had Georgia Decon LLC, and we had, it flipped, the name changed in 2013, the Georgia Flores &amp; More. So that is not a name, that is a company. I'm going to go to the next slide. I noticed some differences in operations. Death investigations, the current coroner is charging a hundred and seventy-five dollars, and this is what she charges, and I had a concern, because when I looked at the previous coroner there, his investigations were a hundred dollars. So I wanted to make sure that someone, or I wanted to make sure that we were within the line of, my question is, why? I said, "Why is she charging one seventy-five and he's charging a hundred?" Well, she is adhering to the Georgia Code Forty-Five, OCGA forty-five dash sixteen, 2017, that says, "A deputy coroner shall be paid a hundred and seventy-five dollars." This, this law was enacted in 2007. In fact, I'll read it to you, it says, "All and after January first, 2007, coroners shall be entitled to investigation fees of a hundred and seventy-five dollars." Now, remember, our coroners are, they are actually salaried, but let me flip to the one that talks about the deputy coroner. And it says, "Such fees shall be paid to the deputy coroner of a hundred and seventy-five dollars as well, for their services." So that is what, so she is actually charging what she's supposed to charge by Georgia state law. Part-time employee agreements have been made, on her side, if you look here, part-time employment agreements have been made and entered into between Douglas County, I think of Georgia, through the Board of Commissioners and signed off by the chairman. All the agreements, part-time agreements, have come through the Board of Commissioners. And if you flip on the other side, previous coroner, contracts with Georgia Decon LLC and Georgia Flores &amp; More did not come before the Board of Commissioners, and that is a third-party contract. And it is, and that contract should have come before the Board of Commissioners, if it's a contract. Only thing that we can find is a vendor application. The vendor application talks about crime scene pickup. It, that's the principal line of responsibility for this particular company, is crime scene cleanup, carpet cleaning, and duct cleaning. So that is volume, and I have the law here, that is volume eleven, resolution page three thousand eight sixty-eight. Now, be willing to share that, and my Board of Commissioners, please feel free to look through your packages. So all third-party, the law says, "All third-party contracts and obligations of the coroner's office shall be first approved by the Douglas County Commissioners in order to bind funds to Douglas County." There, there's no record of training, if we look at Georgia Flores &amp; More, whoever that is, there's no record of training. So, but it was, I was able to reel down to a particular name. But the person was trained in 2013, I mean, they started services in terms of death investigations. When you're performing death investigations, you're actually touching these deceased patients, you're taking photographs, so you have to be credentialed and trained. I've been in the healthcare industry over forty years, I understand healthcare very well, and we have licenses, and we have certifications to touch these patients, such as my deputy coroners, who have to be trained, who have to be astute in making decisions and signing off. And I know that Georgia Flores &amp; More did not sign off on a death investigation. You cannot use that and sign off on death investigation, that name. There's no records to show that Georgia Flores &amp; More were sworn in by judges, and they provided services here in the county for three years, from twenty, well, really, yeah, 2013 to 2016. They're no longer, as of 2016, they're no longer here. Next slide. Differences. The record management and maintenance of the death-related records are in compliance in the current office. There's also a fifty-year retention on records. I ran the Department of the Navy program for environmental asbestos-related records, and they're required to be stored for fifty years. And also sterilization records in healthcare, all types of records related to patient care, especially ones such as death investigations, have to be retained for fifty years. The previous coroner, record management and maintenance of death-related records are missing and unavailable at this time. I'm trying to find them, and I'm still working on that part, because it's a state law. You have those records, so I'm looking for them. We won't make any quick judgments, but I am in the process of trying to find those death investigations. I was, I was able to put my hand on the launch that are in Garland's office, her office is fresh and new, so of course, it was easy to put my hand on hers, but I could not find the other records, and I am looking for those at this time. My overall assessment, coroner Renee Garland, operations align with the 2010 Georgia Title Forty-Five, OCGA forty-five sixteen twenty-seven, and she is paying her deputy coroners a hundred and seventy-five dollars for investigations as specified by OCGA forty-five dash sixteen twenty-seven. Renee Garland's three deputy coroners have been officially sworn in by a judge to perform their duties, and their part-time deputy coroner contracts have been officially approved by Board of Commissioners. Record management processes are being performed in accordance to state and federal law. It's a fifty-year permanent record compliance requirement. Coroner Renee Garland is responsible for conducting death investigations when present at the scene, instead of her deputy coroners, as I said earlier, and the deputy coroners perform investigations in her absence. Based on my comparison and analysis of the current and previous coroner's administrative practices, there were several irregularities identified in the previous coroner's operation, and I owe the Board of Commissioners and the citizens of Douglas County assurance that a thorough investigation will be conducted by the proper authorities. In nutshell, the implications that there were more deaths in 2016, 2017 versus 2016 is, we cannot trace that right now, because I can't find the death investigations that were conducted by the previous coroner, so I can compare those numbers, so we don't want to make any false assessments. But this time, I just want to let you know, I'm still looking for records, records by the state, for Georgia State and its law, and its federal law, that I have to have those. the state, for Georgia state and its law and its federal law, that I have to have those records. So I'm looking for those records and I'll report back as soon as possible. Any questions from the Board of Commissioners? Commissioner Guy.
Should I come up there?
Sure.
I'm not up here to compare 2016 and 2017. I'm up here to talk about what is happening in the office now. And I have to say that anytime somebody comes to me and gives me anything that might be window or personal opinions of what, I always check it out. I do not take people, especially on a hot issue, just what someone tells me because it could be rumor. Ms. Chairman, you're wrong. The death certificate tells you who pronounces the death. And according to the probate office, this is not my Ann's figure, these are probate figures. Renee Garland has not pronounced a death in about six, eight months. About six months. Let's give her the benefit of the doubt. If you Google her name, she popped up as working full-time at Hable, at the city of Hable. She was also driving the county car over there. Now I had pictures, I have pictures of the county car sitting in the personnel pen, but I also went and checked the fleet tickets to show how many miles she was putting on the car. And I assure you, she was not just driving here in Douglas County, in the county car. During the week of March, the 10th or the 9th, she put over a thousand miles on the county car. Now she had got out of state to do that. But I am not after her. I am, I turned it over to the DA because that puts it in neutral ground. I don't want it to be political. I am not comparing 2016 to 2017. I'm just looking at her figures. I gave it to the law enforcement because I am not an attorney. I do not know the difference or the fine line between being unethical and illegal. That's not my job. I'm not an attorney. So I turned it over to the attorneys to do that. They are doing an investigation. But Mr. Bussie has not been sworn in. This came from the probate judge this morning.
But he's not a coroner.
He's driving, he's wearing a badge. And I might call on the sheriff here, the deputy sheriff. Can you carry a badge and have lights on your car if you're not a sworn deputy?
Question I'm not prepared to answer.
Okay. But we need to look at that. Plus, Mr. Bussie has a cloud over his past that you might want to look at since he's driving one of our cars. The state of Georgia does not belong to the organization that Ms. Garland attended in Las Vegas. They don't belong, in fact, there's not but 10 states in the whole United States that belongs to that organization. She was just two or three months into the, her job and she goes outside to Las Vegas on a very expensive trip to an organization that we don't even belong to. It wasn't her required training. But the fleet tickets will tell you a lot about her vehicle. I have the fleet tickets if you want to look at them. When she came before us in 2017 and asked for all these deputies, she used wrong figures. I have proof of that from the probate report. She said there were 70-something deaths in the months of January and February, there was only 30-something. So she enticed us with wrong data. So that kind of puts us in a kind of embarrassing situation too. Georgia Decon and Flores is actually Mark Alcaraz, who was a deputy. He was sworn in.
And he didn't train until 15.
I don't know about the training, but I'm just saying, he, that's his business, that was his business to clean up crime scenes. But I'm not going to compare what happened in 2007 and 2008, cremations. Jennifer, you just gave me a report recently. The cremations are pretty well on track. They're about a third of the budget that she has spent. And Chair, you sat there at the last meeting and said, that's why her budget was running up. Had nothing to do with cremations. It has to do with gasoline. They're part-time employees. She is utilizing her deputies to do all of her work. Until recently, she informed one of them that she was going to have to cut their hours because she was being forced to do some of the investigations. The Sheriff's Office also has a report that tells what car shows up out there. And I did just about three months of them. She showed up on maybe four or five, but she didn't do the reports. She didn't do any of the reports. She, she let somebody else do it. That was, that also showed up on the scene. Like I say, if she shows up on the scene, she should be doing the reports. But she should not be using a county vehicle for her personal use. And I want to know where she went at March the 9th, the week of March the 9th, because she was not at training according to my notes. But I do check my figures. I don't take anybody's word for anything. When it comes to the business of this county, I have to check it out myself. And I've talked with the, I've gotten records from the probate office, I've gotten records from the fleet and everything shows that there's an abuse of the vehicle that she has been given.
Thank you. Commissioner Guy. I have one slide that I didn't have enough to, can I stress this? Just to come to you, I'm going to touch it. If we just, and I know Commissioner Guy just said she didn't compare, but the only way I could get to a reasonable, reasonable answer, I had to compare because I just can't go one side. I'm very impartial, I'm very fair, so I wanted to look at both sides. So if I looked, and I don't have a dog in the fight, all I'm doing is giving the facts and I owe the citizens of Douglas County a response. When you look, if you look at these investigations, Georgia Flores and Moore, Georgia Flores and Moore and Axley and that maker, they did a total from 2013 is when Georgia Flores and Moore came on. It's 578 total and the charges were about a hundred dollars. If you look at, if you, if this was a hundred dollars, this is, this fee total, if you add all this up, this is based on a hundred dollars for death investigations. But if you had really been following the state law of $175, it would be 101,000, 150. And that's why Garland's budget is up because she is paying her coroners, her deputy coroners $175 according to Georgia state law. So this is $63,000. So quite naturally, it's going to appear that your budget is looking a lot better and you're performing better when actually you're not, you're not paying your deputy coroners, whoever this person is, you said, Alcaraz. You're paying them a hundred dollars and really you're supposed to pay them 175, but that's for a whole discussion. So if you look at this total, this is really what should have been paid, 101 instead of 63. So to really say that her budget is off, we really don't have a baseline. It's not a baseline there. To really say, if you look at that trend there, so we need to say, is there really a baseline? Absolutely not, because he didn't pay the right amount to his deputies, so we don't have anything to really to compare with. So with that being said, anybody else have anything? Commissioner Robinson? You're going to sit for me, you're talking.
I don't want to stand up.
Okay, good.
If that's okay with you.
No, you're fine, I'll sit down.
All right. I'm not trying to get into that type of show. Um, speak up please.
You're on the show.
If I come down.
No, I just can't hear you.
No, I'm dealing with a table. I'm just not going to make it type of bad type of show. I just don't want to stand up, please. This is not about me. Don't make some sense.
I can't hear you now.
All right, well, here we go. I want to speak as much as I can, so please pay attention. In listening to this, I'm going to pick back up where I left off at, all right? Be definitive about what you say. The coroner provides a very, very important function to the county. My last comments that were sort of construed, it's not a dismissiveness about what it is by size, that's $200,000. It's about structure. It's not very complex, right? I mean, you guys know how this, when you look down, it's eight quarters, which is but $2. It doesn't take a rocket science, so I can take five quarters off the table just like that to sort of, sort of get what this is really about, right? So I want to come back to, you know, again, I know there's a lot of innuendo, a lot of messaging, a lot of slander in the media, you know, I just don't run from it. I just call it like I see it. I'm like, okay, all right, we get it. Good, good, good video clip. Great. But it didn't change the point. But it still didn't change that, okay, the math is still what it is. I, I'm going to stand on the side that you have to look at historical, okay? That's important, right? You've got to understand the context of where you're coming from, like, okay, are you performing or not performing? To be convenient, only look at today, it's like, okay, well, you can do that, as my district two officers say, yeah, you can say whatever you want to say. Yes, you can. But it doesn't mean that I have to agree with your assertions, right? So I'm listening to this about this coroner, I'm like, gosh, y'all really pushed this to a place like, you really want to go here? Did you, did the county really need to come here? I agree, right, you don't want to go backward. I know why you don't want to go backward. I get why y'all were defending the power of coroner. I get the relationships. We get it. But it's like, is this really necessary for the county? Right? We took that audit, transitional audit, all the way to the point where we were suing responsibly for the county. And we came with a spirit like, okay, there were some, it was like, no, take it out all the way. Prosecute all the way, right? It was like, no, let's be calm, let's, let's, let's transition properly. Everybody's new. We had across the board, new sheriff, new chair, new everybody. Everybody was like, we got to come in. The question was, did this, now again, I'm on the Congressional General Assembly, you know, I get to come and look at what the administration's, so the question is, what did the administration do to onboard new countywide people? Who sat down and took the chair, the sheriff, the tax commissioner, and coroner through a process where they can appreciate everything that needs to be done? Who sat down and explained to them what our vehicle process is? I'm talking a lot of just the way everybody can hear, not that I'm animated. Who did that? Who sat down and said, okay, well, you have options. You can get a car, but you know, we do have car allowances, right? Who sat down, whose responsibility within the administration, look, I'm part-time. I show up, like, y'all tell yourself every now and then, right? You know, every now and then I got to come in and check and inspect, and the officer need to record any time, right? All right, so I come in, I check, I think, so who properly brought these new administrators in to really understand their options? Or did we just have sort of what, you know, we just were convenient, let them find their own way? That's typically why you have transition teams, they bring in with leadership, they bring their own team in. Because you have typically, or you know, you have what they call administrative obstruction, internal bias, all those things exist right here in Douglas County. I'm not playing with what I'm looking at. I mean, I'll let y'all go on, do your jerk, do all your dancing, like, okay, all right, I'm just going to sit back and look at this, just like, okay, what I, what I see is, you can do what you want to do as elected officials, everybody can weigh in from their perspective. It's not that I'm not concerned. I don't agree that the coroner should have given the car to her assistant, whatever whose role was, and the reason is that, but she did have a policy that was written. I'm like, well, who in the administration sat down with her and said, well, we got a policy? Now remember, our, we're the highest governing authority at the local level, so then ours would override that, but in the absence, she created her own law. She was compliant with her policy. But who from the administration went across there and did that? That's not my job, right? So who took their responsibility to reconcile it? I have a problem with that, right? All right, so it's like, okay, well, you know, you need to take that back now. That, 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 that I don't, even Kelly Robinson doesn't agree that that person can't have a car unless they're on assignment, but you can assign them once, so that's one. I would agree with you. You have to take a hit for the team on that one, right? As it relates to, again, whether a person can have a car or not, how they use it, I mean, that's up to them, right? They got to be responsible for that. I think there's a policy that speaks to cars and usage, but then we do allow certain like the sheriff, they get their, they get to do what they want to do with their cars. Now, they may have additional vehicles, I'm not getting into that, I'm not trying to, but I'm saying they have choices, right? But I'm saying, take it off the table and just give them a car allowance, and then it's a moot point, like other people that are here in the county, you have options. Next, I'm just going to finish with the five things that were certainly last, but the third one, this whole notion of using deputies and that we, you know, this whole, and again, I'm just, I listen to the, we don't have to do it the way it was done for 50 years. You don't have to maintain the status quo. You have a newly-elected person came and says, I want to do it this way. I want to make sure that everybody has a death certificate. My father died in 2012 and I'm sitting up in Cleveland, Ohio, he died of cancer, we're in Cleveland, I'm in here, I'm down there with a medical examiner. So I know, like, I know first, you're like, okay, so we going to do it, I'm like, I don't know, my sister looking at me, she's the caregiver, but I'm, for whatever reason, they think I'm supposed to be that guy. And like, I'm having like, I want to know what that is, just like I want to know my birth certificate, when I see my father and my mother and all that, I want certified. So I think if she's bringing that to the table that you've never done, I said, I like that. There needs to be a medical exam, but everybody, send a body over there and come back and give a record. That's fine. Yes, it's going to cost more than the prior administration, but that's the way she wants to do it, that is fine. Just because he didn't, I'm not going to maintain the prior administration's views on things. That's where the whole point, you hired new people. Why would we maintain the status quo? They hired her 140,000 people, the majority says, well, she has an idea. She has a vision for how she wants to do it. And she said what she was going to, and she's doing it. So the fact that now that's more expensive is like, well, no, I knew what I was signing up for, one more time, I paid attention to what was happening. Now, just keep going. This whole notion of whether or not she should pick up bodies or not and all this with you, was the conversation about, well, she's a woman, she don't have to pick up a 200-pound body? Whatever, do y'all know what they really do? And so she uses deputies, that's fine. Now I agree with, Madam Chair, not agree with, Madam Diet, okay, now if you're on site, you got to sign off on that. But just like the sheriff, the sheriff can, no offense to my deputies, but I'm using the sheriff just loosely, the sheriff can arrest you and put you in handcuffs or he can use his deputies, right? Tell me if I'm wrong, but I think he still has the power, if he wanted to actually arrest somebody, he could. The same thing with the DA. The DA can go over there and argue a case within the Superior Court or he can get his A.D.'s, right? Tell me if I'm wrong. Likewise, the coroner can, like, she could either do it herself or she can use her deputies. Now why are we being convenient and trying to say, you're trying to marginalize and say that she's only supposed to, like, no, I'm not buying that narrative. She is not box and beat, only do this. She can run it the way she want to. She is across countywide seat. So why are we taking this position that she has to do it your belief way? I'm not buying that. I won't support that. I'm not hearing her defense, but I'm hearing from what I see from District Two is like, no, she gets to do it her way. Just like people can say what they want to say, she can run it her way and if she wants to outsource everything, that's fine. If the prior guy wanted to go and pick people up, that was his choice. Last point, follow the money. Always follow the money. So the last thing that came to my attention, again, I really had an opinion, again, just contrary to, again, one time to the dismissiveness, which I thought was somewhat insulting. Last time the coroner couldn't be here, so it was brought to my attention, right, going to be the coroner, not here, I said, okay, we can't cancel this. We got to allow the public to hear this. So I became the second to Madam Chair, like, no, Madam Chair, we got to, we got to have that audience. One more time, I enabled that. It's like, no, they need to get somebody over here. It's that important to the public. It was that important. So here we are, in full circle, right? And so now we're here in this meeting and what was important is saying, okay, when the guy said in the meeting, which I do appreciate him, I don't remember, it doesn't matter, they were just up there talking, and he said, wait a minute, I'm supposed to be paid this and I was only paid that. And my issue- And my issue is, wait a minute. There's a variance in pay, you're doing a labor law? Whoa, wait a minute, we got contracts out there to one sign up, now where's the check and balance within the administration, right? So, again, my, my Director of Purchasing is not here, but I had this conversation with him last week, he said, Commissioner Robinson, go ahead and say what you got to say. Because he said, hey, I brought this up to the administration that I thought that that was wrong. You got to remember that, he made, I said, look, Director Bigg, I heard you, I'm going to bring this up next week, he said, go ahead, I saw, I'm not, this ain't about you. The fact is, is that, why are y'all running money through this, this, like, somebody, this, like, this is wrong, right? And then you're not paying people, and then I'm looking at this list of reports, like, let's, let's keep the math, like, okay, so you're paying some people above 175, you're paying some people below 100. I'm like, what money? You keeping the margin? Now, I'm not a criminal investigator, but I, I'm good at like, okay, I know where this is about to go. Y'all are playing with this. Y'all took this to a place where it's like, ooh, really? We can pretend like, okay, I'm just not going to listen to that, la, 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 I'm not going to listen to the other side, like, guys, is this what you really wanted? Right, I mean, and then the, wait, the undertone is so bad. And I'm like, guys, come on, we can do better than this. And sometimes you can't even pull up, I know, sometimes, we're down in the path, guys, we're looking at, we're down the path, like, gee, we're already down that path, you can't pull up. You can't pull up. So my problem is, I'm going to ask my, my Director of Finance, that based on what Madam Chair just said, and I saw the numbers, it looks like that, based on the prior coroner's budget, which we were basing things on, I'm going to ask two questions. Have there ever in the history of the prior coroner as a director in by this county gone over budget?
Yes.
And does that happen more than once a year, and again, one person, I mean, not all the time, but just?
Yes.
And do we normally monitor this in the Finance Committee meeting, that it is recognized that there's somebody who's over?
Yes.
And is there normally conversation of corrective or not corrective, or is there some type of explanation that exists within the finance report to talk about those variances?
Yes, we talk about the explanations and if it's going to smooth out before the end of the year.
Before it's moved out the end of the year. So if I give you a budget like any other constitutional officer, like your directors, you got your budget to manage. Okay, isn't that an expectation, we allow you to manage, you got to the end of the year, now, when you're tracking, you will go off the cliff, right now, we won't allow it. I look at the same thing, have we ever had anybody, whether it's constitutional state director, come at the end of the year and all of a sudden, like, oh my God, I'm over budget? Have you ever had an instance of that?
Yes, we have.
I can think of one, maybe infrequently, we've only judicial side, every year, there's concrete attorneys, there's no way to estimate how many people have, as you know, there's a state law that says what? That every child, right? Every child, every parent, whatever the guardian is, everybody gets an attorney. And there's no way to estimate that, no more, you can estimate the number of deaths. You guys are playing with numbers, it's like, guys, you, you can only do the best that you can, but you can't anticipate, and every year, we say, well, we understand it, there's a variance on the judicial side, and what do we do? We have to acknowledge, like, okay, they got to get their attorneys. Same thing with these deaths, we're not going to leave bodies on the floor because all of a sudden we're going to get down here to the end. If it's tracking and they're managing it reasonably, this is, well, but there are more deaths. Or better yet, it's a more accurate death, because the death that y'all had, y'all don't even have a paperwork. There's no record. Madam Chair was very nice about doing records, I'm just not that guy. It's like, where the records at? Where are the records? But then we want to be convenient about how we want to emphasize this data versus that data, tell the whole story, show the whole video. Don't just be convenient. So, again, the coroner can pretty much, she, she has a right, you guys who hired her, hired her to make decisions, and again, we don't leave bodies on the table, right? We, we're, we're not going to leave them there. But she has a right to sort of bring a newness to this, to say, look, but I want everybody to have a death certificate, I want to do what's right, so, right now, she is not, you want to get into the, like, okay, whether she goes to training or not, okay, she's got to be kind of like my supposed to support, I said, yes, I'm you, right? You, you handle that what you think is reasonable, and if you think you can get through with that, then that's fine, I'm not, I'm not going to worry about that. But there is, there has to be a reconciliation of, of prior, that if I owe somebody, and so I guess my question, my final question to my Finance Director, which is, based on what Madam Chair just reported, and based on that report, 101,000 was the number?
Yes, sir.
That it should have been, based on the historical?
Yes, sir.
And it came in, what, 63,000?
December 64.
Six, six, three's have changed, that's fine, all right. So that means that there's a variance in what somebody should have been paid, correct?
That's correct.
37, 36 dollars? All right, I'm good with my math, $37,000 that we owe somebody's in deferred compensation, I want to know what the public would think about that? That discounting, pretty much, if you work for the coroner's office, it's like that guy set up here and said, like, well, gee, so what'd they do? They just sort of go give you a little bit and then give their friends more? Because based on this report, it's like you get some above and below the numbers, so, okay, there was no consistency. I get why you don't want to go back and look at that, right? I get that they don't care, we're friends, and you, you know, you can't separate the two. See, I, I'm not that common, so I could ask and be very serious about the questions I'm asking, like, no, they don't get in my way, like, okay, I think that man deserves to be paid what he paid. Now, I know that this whole 37,000 is probably not one person, is that correct? It's probably multiple?
Four.
Four people. I tell you what, at this point, because they're getting into sort of an HR matter, it sounds like you probably, you're going to validate these facts. I would encourage that you talk to HR and our legal, Ken, would you think it would be an HR issue, a HR topic to take off line? Ken?
The, the pay issue?
Yes.
Yes, legal and or?
Legal, all right, that's what I thought. Now?
Sure.
Paul, will you, Director Perry, and Tom, and sort of figure out a real answer and come back with an opinion on what really is? Who we should pay, who we should not pay, W-9, W-2, can you reconcile that truth? Has nothing to do with criminal investigation, I just want to know, if I owe somebody, I want to make sure that they're properly paid.
Okay.
Can we do that?
We can do that.
Thank you, Madam. Madam Chair, I'm, I'm, I think that's all I had, unless the coroner was here, I would have asked different questions, but I want to come back to these five that were certain. I, I, I think it's unfortunate, but again, it's nothing wrong with healthy debate, it's okay with opposition and different opinions, it's fine. I just, just, just keep it in a fair way, right? Just not make it personal, just, just keep it over the process and the facts, and which more process is, I would make it about the people. Madam Chair, you.
Commissioner Mitchell. I mean, I wanted to address some of the things that he was talking about with me. Who'd you call up?
Commissioner Mitchell.
Okay, go ahead.
You guys can be debating, I mean, this is, this is.
I know, and I just wanted to clarify something.
You, you get your shot. But what I would like to do, though, is, I know there's a lot of conversations that's being had.
Can I, can I ask that he come up here, if I can't hear?
I'll do it this way, then, there's a lot of conversations that's being had, I just think it's probably proper that we at least allow the coroner to have this conversation, to be a part of this whole conversation. I think we're all.
She's here.
Yes, I know she's here, that's, that's why, that's why I'm going to ask if, if she would come forward and enlighten us as to where we are, what these conversations that, or your, your report of what that is, and give you an opportunity to kind of share your side of the issue. And then I'll conclude at that point, if you don't mind, yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First of all, I want to say, in reference to training and lawsuits, that training is for, to give the coroner's office nationally certified credit. And it would be in the all, this would be the only county in the state of Georgia to have that certification. That's what the training was for. I have here my statistical report for 2017 versus 2018, and I'm going to show you what we have and how, the difference in the number of deaths. The primary purpose of the coroner's office is to certify death investigation that fall under the jurisdiction of the coroner under Title 45, known as the Joint Death Investigation Act. Not every death need to be valid in nature, coroner can investigate natural deaths as well. An example would be a decedent who had not been to his doctor and over a year, yet died of natural causes. Doctors who have not seen a patient, who have not signed off on a death certificate, so that falls under the coroner and the medical examiner. Another example would be a decedent who is admitted to the hospital in an unconscious state and does not regain conscious within 24 hours. If they pass at the hospital within 24 hours, that falls on the coroner's jurisdiction. Coroners as part-time employees. By definition, coroners and deputy coroners are part-time county employees. This means that the coroner's office is not their full-time job, but rather an on-call and as-needed occupation. This means that just like any other part-time job, coroners and deputies can and oftentimes do have other jobs outside of the coroner's office. It's funded to death calls and administrative duties as they arrive. Most full-time employers who employ part-time coroner deputies understand the commitment necessary to the coroner's office and allow the coroner's deputies to respond to calls, even though it's part-time, the coroner's office unlike the part-time job. How part-time coroners different than part-time occupation? The primary difference with part-time coroners and deputies is that the coroner's office has not, has no set hour. Sometimes on-call coroner orders more hours than full-time require, other times the office are shorter. Death calls are the primary duty of the coroner, and death is unpredictable. Many coroners do require certain amount of time in the office for him or her staff in a deputy coroner. It's for his administrative duties associated with the job. The hours spent in a job do not stop when the investigation leaves the death scene. Many hours, days, weeks, even months, can go into an investigation. Violent paperwork, speaking with family, corresponding with law enforcement agencies, and human health, as few of the deputies fulfill. User vehicular, coroner vehicular, or any vehicular use aid in coroner's office and their duty. The most obvious would be a coroner van used to pick up and transport a decedent to and from the state medical examiner, or other uses pertaining to coroner business, such as attending meetings, picking up, dropping off records, paperwork, reports, etc., any other deputy coroner business with local and state agency. Douglas County Coroner Office SOP 9.1A vehicular policy. County vehiculums are intended to be used for county business. However, policy allows for reasonable use of vehicular for personal errands by employee who are assigned vehicular on a 24-hour basis to respond to emergency situation. This policy covers the use of three. Coroner vehicular by coroner investigation and other coroner office staff using a vehicular for official business. All employees who drive county vehicular must possess a valid driver's license and evidence of safe driving records. Coroner may designate use of county vehicular as an out-of-county take-home vehicular. Reasonable judgment must be exercised in the use of county vehicular for personal purposes. Committed use would include any use that results in negligible expense or is justified by compelling circumstances. For example, undue investigator may use vehicular for a personal errand if errand is on the way to their business destination or home at the end of the day, and the errand does not delay their responses to unseen or called. Certain circumstances arise to warrant death investigation outside of the county. While the primary basis of death investigation occur within a county border, certain situation may bring the coroner or deputies outside the county. If certain situation result in death of subsequent passing of a decedent, even if the decedent passes outside the county border, it still falls under the coroner discretion, discretion to investigate. For example, if accident occurs inside the county and the nearest hospital is in a neighboring county, a trauma center outside of the county, the series of events leading to the decedent's desperation occurring within county border. Medical intervention should be accounted, but should not limit the incumbent to investigation. If a car crash victim is a fresh inside Douglas County, is taken to a hospital outside the county, rate based on proximity to the accident, the Douglas County official are to take charge of that investigation as that accident happened in Douglas County and should be included in Douglas County vital statistics. Population growth effects and death volumes. Population within a county is directly correlated with the volume of death in certain counties. Particular population growth. Douglas County has experienced a significant population growth over the last few years, particularly in 2017. According to MBJ, Douglas population saw a steady rise in resident inside the county, particularly in 2017, with nearly a 2,000 people a year increase. It stands to reason that with more people population increase, more deaths will occur. While death itself is unpredictable, it is tractable. Every other county which has experienced a significant population increase has also seen a rise in death and death calls. Douglas County is 1.6, has 1.6 growth, double car county in 2017, population increase of 0.7, and exceeded Georgia's overall growth of 1.3. Title 45 is known as Georgia Death Investigation Act and is former legislation pertaining to the coroner office. The coroner acts as department head of his or her constitutional office. Title 45 continues, Title 45 authorized the coroner to write his or her own standard operation procedure or manager of office operation and personnel. Have as many deputy coroner as he's or she sees fit, dedicate any and all responsibility to deputy coroner that he's or she chooses, dedicate overseas any investigation of decedent who case originated inside the county. Any case whether homicide, suicide, accident, or natural, even outside the county, which originated inside the county, reverts back to the county and is under the jurisdiction of the coroner. If a decedent originated inside the county and circumstances inside the county lead to his or her death, even if the decedent is transported for medical reason or other outside the county, since the circumstances lead into death originated inside the county, it is lawful for the county coroner to take control of that investigation. Deploy deputy coroner as he's or she sees fit, certain instances may even require all deputy coroner to be at a scene. It is lawful within a county coroner's authority, dedication of duties is at coroner's discretion. This, this is a stat of the decedent that passed away 2017 versus 2018. In 2017, from the ages of 0 through 50, you had 10 people to pass away in 17, and nine to pass away in 18, between the ages of 0 and 50. Between the ages of 51 to 100 plus, you had 16 to pass in 2016, and 19 to pass in 2017. In February 2017, ages 0 through 50, you had eight, and in 2018, you had nine. In 2017, from the ages of 51 to 100 plus, you had 16, and in 2018, you had 22. In March, the ages of 0 to 50 in 2017, you had nine. In 2018, you had 16. In March, the ages of 50 to 100 plus, you had 13 deaths, and 2018, you had 20 deaths. April 2017, 0 to 50, you had four. 2018, you had six. Ages 51 to 100, in 2017, you had 12, and in 2013, I'm sorry, in 2018, you had 13. And in May, from the age of 0 to 50, you had two in 2017, and eight in 2018. And 2017, you had 15 for 51 plus, and 14 for 2018. These are our stats for the total of death 2017, 2018. In January 2017, you had 26 to pass. In 2018, you had 28 to pass. In February, you had 21 to pass, 24 to pass, and you had 31 in 2018. And March. In March, you had 22 to pass. And in 18, you had 36. April, you had 18 in 2017 and 19 in 2018. May, you had 17 in 2017 and 22 in 2018. These are the causes of death. You had, in 2017, you had 5% of accidental death, 5% of suicide, and 5% of overdose. The other 86% was natural cause death. In 2018, you had 10% accident and 5% suicide, 86% natural cause. February 2017, you had 21% of overdose, 17% of accident, and 63% natural cause. 2018, you had 7% accident, 4% homicide, and 89% natural cause. March, we had 14% suicide, 14% accident, and 73% natural cause. March 18, 2018, you had 24% accident, 5% homicide, 10% suicide, and 62% natural cause. April, you had 6% accident, 6% homicide, 6% suicide, 6% overdose, and 78% natural cause. April 2018, you had 13% suicide and 88% natural cause. 2017, May, you had 18% overdose, 6% suicide, 6% homicide, 6% accident, and 65% natural cause. May 2018, you had 6% suicide, 6% homicide, 22% accident, and 67% natural cause. Cases with weights over 200 pounds. In January 2017, you had 29%. In 2018, 29%. In February, you had 8%. 2018, you had 26%. In March of 2017, you had 27%. In March of 2018, you had 28%. In April 2017, you had 17%. And 2018, 11%. May, you had 35% in 2017 and 36% in 2018. In 2017, there was nine cases with decedents over 300 pounds and one case with a decedent over 400 pounds. So far in 2018, there have been three cases with decedents over 300 pounds, one case with a decedent over 350, and one case with a decedent over 400 pounds. Any questions?
Okay, yes. Thank you, folks, of all. And I don't know, this may be more question for you two, Ken, as well. Because I think I'm hearing a couple of different things. I heard part-time, full-time. And I don't know, maybe you, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I think I heard part-time, which I thought that was the status quo of this particular makeup. But is that the case in Douglas County, or is it considered full-time, or do you know? That's my first question.
The deputies definitely are part-time by contract and their papers.
Right, I know about that, I'm talking to the coroner.
The coroner is an elected official, not a constitutional office. Many of her dictates don't come from the state legislature. They come from local legislation through the state, not necessarily general law. She's under local legislation, House Bill 653, which governs her, and that's why y'all have to approve her third-party contracts. As to full or part-time, I don't think the law is clear, obviously. When you don't know if somebody's gonna die, it's a full or part-time job. Meaning, it's not written somewhere that this is a full-time job or a part-time job. Definitely, deputies are part-time.
And you probably understand why I'm asking that question because if it's part-time and you're trying to do, I would look at the label law that we talked about earlier. That would mean, just say, just from a legal perspective, will be 20 hours, I guess, or no more than 30. You know, if we're gonna look at hourly, we're trying to speak on hours as a part-timer versus a full-timer. But, I mean, I'm not gonna get into the schematics, but I'm just trying to understand the difference of the two.
There is no, I want to make sure this part is clear. I don't know about the history, but since y'all approved the deputies' contracts, they're paid on a per diem basis. They are legal within the Fair Labor Standards Act. There is no labor issue with respect to deputies that are under contract approved by the court, at least from the time y'all approved the contract. So there is no minimum wage or hourly issue with respect to those people, at least as of last year when we approved those contracts. I don't remember the exact date, but I think May, maybe. June, May, June.
Okay, okay, so with that, and I have to say, your choice in the matter was to approach it as a part-time perspective and run your office accordingly. Correct. And with that, and the law doesn't state whether or not you could have a, well, even as a constitutional officer, as the sheriff, he can actually have another job elsewhere, correct? It doesn't state that he or she can't, as constitutional officers, could have an additional stream of income.
I'm not, I think the only requirement of deputy, I mean, on the coroner, is to not violate the law, whatever that would be. But I don't think there's a specific law that says that a coroner couldn't have another job.
Or any constitutional officer.
They're right.
Right, okay, that's, yeah.
Now, with respect to the deputies, their contract governs their ability to have part-time jobs, which y'all can control. Y'all cannot control what the coroner elects to do about having another job, so long as she fulfills the job that she has.
Mm-hmm, got it, got it. Okay, and the numbers that you gave us, the numbers that you gave us within 2017, that was a lot of stuff. And I would love to get a copy of that, so I can actually just kinda dissect it a little bit more, so I can get my hit arms around it. Did it also include, I mean, you could look at, I mean, a body could be touched, or transported, or moved one, twice, or three times, depending upon the situation, correct?
No, it doesn't. It just, those numbers are just number of deaths, not how many times they can move.
That's what I thought. So that number could be a lot higher, or definitely a different number we would actually kinda look at. Because without the transport numbers included in the numbers that you gave, the numbers would be fewer. Yeah, yes. Because, and what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to get my arms around your expenses. Kind of the true expenses, not, because we can't predict, we don't know when that situation will occur. But we need to be there as a board of commissioners to assure that whenever that happens, that the services that we provide with the coroner's help, that we're there to make sure that these families are taken care of, correct? So you can't give that number, at least you gave me the body count, but you didn't give me the transport count. Because that number would be kinda, be an additional expense, depending upon how many times you move or what's next with the body, correct? Okay. All right, well, again, thank you for the information. But I'd love to get, will we be able to get a copy of that so we can kinda really dissect that and look at it?
How can you not say that?
Yes, yes, but I'd love to get a copy of that also. I yield back.
Mission Director?
Yes, ma'am, and I just want to address the fact that it was implied that I was friends with Randy. I knew Randy probably as well as I do any of y'all. Never came to my house. Sometime I really saw him, was at the chili cook-off. And when he came to buy his tags, he was not a, he was an acquaintance, just like many people are acquaintances here. But my question started way back in 2017, and I wrote you a letter. And I spelled out in the email my concerns about how the office was being conducted. And it was not just about you not doing a certain percentage of the work, but it was about the deputies too, and the billing of the deputies. So there was an internal audit. You called for an internal audit at that time, and they backed up what I said. And they even questioned why Ms. Godwin was on-site. Now, no, she cannot pick up a 200, 300-pound body, but if you're on-site, why didn't you do the investigation?
I'm a team player.
And let them do the transport.
I'm a team player. I go out and I help them.
But you get paid. You get paid a salary. They get paid per call.
Okay, just like you said, I can't lift 200 pounds. There's been cases where they have 300 pounds. I help them lift 300 pounds. I'm not gonna put my deputies at harm's way. And just because I wanna go out there to assist them, I can do that. I'm a constitutional officer. I don't have to do anything if I want.
You're not a constitutional officer.
I am a constitutional officer.
You're an elected official. You're not a constitutional officer.
But I run my office, and I run how I wanna run it.
Well, but if you're on the site, and this was backed up with the internal audit, why didn't you at least do the investigation of the body and do the pronouncing? But you don't transport bodies in your car. So your car is not used for transporting bodies everywhere. Only the vans are. Right? So when you went to Hapeville, when you were working over in Hapeville, I think you since quit that, that job, but you were on full-time there. Were you not, was it a part-timer or full-timer?
Yes, it was a full-time job. And if I'm on-call at the coroner's office, I can, if I get a call, I have to go there and call. And so if I'm in Hapeville, if I'm in Alabama, if I get a call, I would have to leave, and I have my car accessible to go where I wanna go when I get a call.
So how many calls did you do?
I can't tell you how many calls I got.
From the first three to four months of the year?
I couldn't tell you that.
Well, you pronounced no deaths.
Well, that's, that's good.
Back to October of last year, you pronounced none of the deaths. So you had to be on-scene to pronounce the death. So you were not on-scene, the deputies did it.
You said I gave it to the deputy. I came on-scene, but I gave it to the deputy, so you were there.
Then I was there? What do you mean I was there?
How could you tell me what scene I'm on?
Well, the sheriff's office, they do a report as to what coroner shows up. You probably didn't notice. But anyway, the law, there is a law governing your deputies, is there not?
Yes, it is.
And it does say that you're to do the work unless you're unable to do so.
It doesn't say the coroner does the work. It, no, it doesn't. It says that the deputy does work in the absence of a coroner. It doesn't say specifically the coroner do the work. And if it say that, then you're sure to.
The law I read does say that the coroner is to do the work unless they're unable to do so, and then the deputies can. But that's gonna, that's why, because of all this discrepancy, I don't know what's legal and what's just unethical. So that's why I turned it over to the DA, okay? And that's gonna be settled right there.
I'll be back.
My concern was the fact that in 2017, two months in office, you came to us and you quoted all these figures and convinced us that your work had doubled, that there were 78 deaths in January, I mean, calls, not deaths. Now, a whole bunch of people die, but y'all aren't caught on every death. So there were 78 deaths, you said, in the months of January and February, when the death certificates prove otherwise. They showed 30-something, I can't remember the exact number, but half of what you told us. So we based our assumption that you needed all these deputies on the figures you gave us.
That's how, that's how I requested additional deputies. I requested the deputies that the prior coroner had the year before. The same deputies that I have is the same deputies that he had. The only difference, I requested like legislation states, and he did not. He just swore in and they worked for him. He did not come to you guys and ask for additional deputies.
But you asked for so many deaths.
I asked for them, but they were the same one that worked for Randy.
I don't care who they were, I don't, I don't know.
I did the right thing.
Which you gave us wrong figures, and our action was...
You would get the email. You would keep texting, I don't know.
Okay, our action was based on that. But let me go on just with a couple of things. So if the law says that you're supposed to do it except for when you're unable to do so, how can you hold a full-time job outside the county, in your county vehicle, by the way, county gas being paid by taxpayers of Douglas County? You don't think that's an abuse?
I'm a part-time employee, so I can work a full-time job. Part-time don't mean I have to come here from 8:00 to 8:04 or whatever. I can come here anytime. I can come at night, and you don't get all your calls on a daytime. You get calls at nighttime. I have administrative paperwork to do, just like any other head.
But you have an assistant in the office that does that, Mr. Best?
He doesn't do everything.
He doesn't do the, all these reports?
I handle the administrative part as it relates to purchasing and all of that stuff and my policy and trying to get my officer credit.
Well, like I said, that is why I turned it over to the DA, because that's for somebody else with a legal mind to determine. I think it's abuse, but that's my opinion. A lot of people think it's abuse, but that's their opinion. I try to stick to the facts, and I always investigate. When somebody comes to me and tells me something, I investigate to see if there's anything, data, that will back them up or contradict them. So I always do that. And it is no personal vendetta I have against you. When you came to us and asked, when you were two months in the job, and asked for 81% raise, because this was a full-time job. You stated that, that this is a full-time job. This is not a part-time job, but you can hold a part-time, a full-time job in another county and do your work here. That is my, that's where, I don't know where the line of being illegal and...
Okay. I hear you live the typical coroner figure that.
Good. Okay, so we're done? Any other comments? And I'll just wrap things up. Thank you so much today, coroner, for sharing what's going on in your office. Very great information, good information. And I'm quite sure the citizens have a different respect for your office and the things that you're doing. Also, but I want to just talk about full-time jobs for a part-time coroner. I had an opportunity to benchmark and look at other counties. These part-time coroners in other counties have full-time jobs, and they are using their vehicles because they're on-call 24 hours a day. So I was able to do some due diligence, because again, I'm very impartial, wanted to be fair. And I looked, so I was surprised to find out that they are. They have full-time jobs, because $32,000 or whatever they make is not enough to subsidize the needs and the special needs of their families and so...
Do you think they had full-time jobs?
They had full-time jobs.
Full-time jobs?
Yep, full-time jobs in conjunction, you look at three. And they're close by, so they have full-time jobs.
Close by.
Yeah, close by. So we'll talk about those offline. Also, as well, I know our commissioner, Dr. Best, the DA, has your information, because mine has some things of various, some regularities regarding Georgia state law, the pricing, the swearing-in. First of all, I've been in healthcare a long time, and I talked about this, and I was rather kind earlier. But we know that you do not sign Georgia laws and boards on anybody's death investigations. So once we sign these documents, and records are very important, and I have to have those records to move forward, because it is a Georgia and a federal state law. So I'm looking for records, and when I find those, we can, I'll provide another update to the citizens. But right now, this investigation is in the hands of the district attorney as well regarding these numbers, because I'm very, I was blown away. Wasn't looking for discrepancies, but wanted to know why there is a difference in 100 versus 175. And I just started just trending the information, and I was shocked, so...
Can I ask you a question? You said at the last meeting that she was over her budget because of the number of cremations. However, the finance department has just said cremations are in line with... So it was not, it has nothing to do with cremations. Did she tell you that?
No, she didn't have to tell me. I looked at it, I did see that the cremations and that was me. I looked at it, she didn't give me any information about cremation. I looked at that and also I was looking, but if you look at her death investigations, which are driven by the deputy coroners, I know we saying they're up, but she's charging 175, they're not up. She's charging the present, so she kind of comparing. So what are we comparing her operation to? I have nothing right now to compare it with because this was erroneous. It was not charged by state law and I keep saying law. And I want to, I don't want to try to be silent elementary, but law means the law. You charge 175 or you pay 175. We don't pay our deputy coroner $100. So I don't want to dig, I took a very deep dive. It was a lot of irregularities, irregularities that I discovered. That information, the DA has it, so we'll let him look at it and he will, he'll decide. Any other questions from the board of commissioners before I move forward?